This conference will now be recorded.
Call this council meeting to order. Seven o'clock, June 21st, 2001, regular council session. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Presentations tonight.
Is there a motion to approve? The agenda?
Oh, sorry.
Is that a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
Anybody second? Counselor Webb, second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Usually she calls a roll, but committee's got her tonight. There's only three of us.
I appreciate it.
Okay, now we'll move on to presentations. Nothing tonight.
Yep.
It's gonna go fast. Mayor's report, the mayor is absent tonight. Stephanie, did he send one in?
It was up to Grant.
I have a little something to say.
For the mayor's report?
Yes. Aye to me.
Right. Okay, citizen of the month?
Yes. There's a gentleman who was born in Veronia. He said the only time he hasn't lived here was when he was at the hospital being born. He, I think he graduated in 1973. He's always been active in music and as a public person who likes to help. He's been very active in starting bands. He likes to play music. He mows the lawn at the museum. He's been very active at the museum for years. He drives the most unusual car in Veronia, which I'm giving some pretty good tips here. Wonderful guy, great volunteer, always willing to help, just an all-around good guy, Rob Wilson.
Oh, yeah, excellent. Rob's not here tonight.
He's kind of shy because of the COVID.
Oh, well, yeah. Stephanie, is we gonna let the mayor present that to him when he gets back?
I usually have him sign it when I mail it to the person.
Okay. Great. Okay, we'll move on to counselor committee meeting reports. Your reports tonight?
We meet tomorrow.
Oh, the council.
Who did?
George. No quorum.
That's not good.
You have one?
I missed the last parks meeting. I let them know, but I will be at the one Wednesday. And I have some things that I want to talk to them about, the golf cart and some other things, play equipment at Aurora Bullhorn. I've got some other stuff that I will have in our next meeting, I will have. Not tonight, sorry.
Has the airport committee had a meeting this year?
No, but now that we're starting to meet, I will get ahold of them.
So, we got a question. So, we put some funds in to potentially develop some camping down there at the lake or the parking lot extension and then start on the camping down there. We've forgotten the budget. You don't remember?
No.
Yeah, we added money in there.
I remember money for the bathrooms, the showers.
Upgrade.
Logging, but I don't remember the cutting in the campground.
Yeah, it was a thousand dollars for cat time.
Yeah, we took, we took, what did we take? What did we take that out of?
It was like a thousand for gravel and a thousand for some cat time for a day to push.
At the lake?
At the lake.
Oh, you had me confused. I was thinking Spencer.
Okay.
When you were talking this. Remember that.
So, I think it would be appropriate to start tasking that parks committee with, see what their ideas are and I don't know if it's appropriate for another counselor to attend their meeting or we just go through the liaison or?
I mean, it's not against the rules for two counselors to show up to the same meeting. If three show up, we have a problem.
Or you guys talk about it offline.
Right, or if you're talking about it on the side. But no, I think, I mean, we kind of know what their original plan was and we're, that's the direction we're heading, is that kind of roundabout with some pullouts. So, if they wanted to tweak it or?
Well, that original thousand dollars was just to kind of level it up so it wasn't so muddy?
I think there was more money involved than that when we?
I think it was gravel and then some cat time to pay someone on a cat to clear around the burner base of all the foliage that's, you know, skim it basically.
Probably talked more than a thousand bucks then.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think we put more than a thousand in there.
I can't remember.
I'll have to look.
I thought I remember you saying something about eight hundred dollars for a day to get a cat down there or something, but I'd have to go back and listen to it.
Yeah, that was for some other work, but.
For a day?
See, he added another, well, that was on the trees, I guess he added more money there.
I'd have to look. I'd have to create, I'd have to go.
I can't even remember what the numbers were, but I know we have enough money to do some preliminary work and I think it would be appropriate for the parks committee to.
They probably do it on that, I mean, I.
It's on the 24th.
They might.
Excuse me, it's Wednesday, was it 23rd?
Thursday, Thursday, Wednesday, third Thursday, right?
I thought it was the last Wednesday.
No, it's the Thursday. It's the 24th, I believe.
Yeah, it's the 24th.
There were emails discussing changing the date till 30th, so you might want to double check. I haven't heard of positive rescheduling, but it might be rescheduled this month.
Yeah, look at the city calendar, there's a budget line for that.
I don't know yet, they haven't told me. Yeah.
Probably eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something to bring up, that money's been put in the budget for the lake primitive pool dry camping or whatever we're calling it.
My cemetery meeting went quite well. I came down and met the new cemetery maintenance guy and unfortunately his cemetery meeting was canceled as I was driving home and didn't get the memo, so the meeting wasn't held due to lack of quorum, I guess. But hopefully the next time we'll have one.
Those, those will be wet camp spots for the RVs or they'll be dry?
Right now, they're just primitive, so you're just a pad.
Place to pull in.
Yep. Probably pull in a fire ring and a picnic table.
That's important.
That would be the plan, I think, ultimately.
No, that's, they're self-contained anyways.
Yeah.
Ready to move on? Yes, consent agenda for acceptance. The library board meeting minutes, the cemetery committee meeting minutes, the parks committee meeting minutes.
I believe you've skipped topics from the floor.
Yeah. Oh, boy, I gotta get two pair of glasses on, excuse me. Topics from the floor, let's back up. We have Wendy Sears. Welcome.
So, I'm the chairperson for this Wendy Sears, committee chairperson for the Rose State Park. Just bringing an update to you, wanted to just go over some of the statistics from before. We have about 10,000 square feet to work with. We're looking at about a 9,000 square foot park. That means it's about 1,000 square feet for tables and benches for family picnics to watch the kids. The city owns the property and the city pays for the drainage and the permits. We have approximately $360,000 towards the skate park. 305 of that is cash. We have 25,000 cash from the Toma Hawk Foundation that's dedicated to construction only until this year, so we have to start construction this year. The nonprofit owns the money, the cash money, so potentially we don't have to do a prevailing wage, which is going to bring the cost down of the skate park. We have 20,000 from the city as a donation from a year and a half ago. In kind, we have 7,500 towards excavation by J. Voss. We also have an in-kind for a local excavator to do the excavating at cost, the hextones. And we also have a local contractor that will haul all the loads of this from dirt from the skate park. We have three local people that can do welding, one is a metal sculptor. We have another, we have several local volunteers that are ready to do anything. And I remind that it's a push hole due to human requirements for that area. And we have a list of must-haves that's included with our bid request. We want it to have an organic look so that it's not an eyesore. Fluorescence in the concrete benches and the poles so that it glows at night. There's only like three others that are in UK, so this will be the first one in America. So that's going to draw a lot of skaters to Veronia. Fluorescence, so lighting under the benches where the kids hang out, so that's not in your eyes. So there'll be lighting under the benches so that they could, you know, skate around and around the pole. We want a type of snake that goes with this, either from a sidewalk or from the parking area right into either the bowl or one of the skate elements that they can skate on. The bowl, a couple of street elements that they can slide down, you know, what they slide down stairs and stuff. Architectured for skateboard, scooters, BMX bikes and roller blades. They want a pump track, which is like, looks like this around this, which is part of the snake. There's several other things in here that we are requesting. Quarter pipe, steel coping, launch box, kicker ramp, pump, pump, pump sections, rollers and a really good medium-sized ledge and a flat bar manual pad so that you do back-to-back tricks and a water fountain. Melody does that six weeks ago and we put the bid together, we started putting it together, but I gave her a list that I have here so that she can put the bid together. So we have four skate park constructors that are ready. They're waiting for the bid to go out and as soon as that bid hits the, it's posted, they're going to go through it and put a bid in. We have four of them. For future fundraising, we're looking at sales over the skate area, tech tables and benches for the family. I've already been contacted by the family that wants to pay for a dedicated bench for that area and additional lighting. That's it?
Thank you.
Great report. I got a question. Anybody got a question for Wendy? I do, about the fluorescents. Is that something that they mix and cast into the concrete as they're finishing it?
It won't be in the finishing, yes, not in the concrete, yeah, in the finished part of it.
Just like the color dye they cast it and trowel it in?
Yes, exactly, yes.
Do you have the cost on that?
No, that's part of the bid, so I'm really hoping that that can be factored in. So, it's a want, but it's not like a must-have.
Okay, and then I know there's a couple of special signs to our large donor that he's requesting for that skate park as well.
Yeah, our, the boosters has been in contact with him, so they're, and I think that Jova maybe.
Yeah.
Has been in contact to find out exactly what he wants as far as the sign. He wants like a rock or a platform.
I can't remember.
Yeah. Do you guys want me to speak a little bit to it?
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to update on getting the bid out.
Yeah, so it's kind of tricky because we don't want it to be prevailing wage because it's not really the city's money. That's what, over $250,000 triggers prevailing wage when it's a city public works project. So, the city's money will be used for amenities for Spencer Park. That will be light, lighting, like night lighting, the sign potentially.
Cameras.
The cameras, benches. The cameras, though, are kind of a different thing because there might be a way to use some of the ARPA money for cameras separately. So in order to keep it not prevailing wage, we have to be like basically two projects. The contractors aren't going to do what the city will do. It won't be in the bid. So, in order to try and get as many of the things as the skate group wants, we're doing the blanket bid with the elements we know we definitely want and then we're going to ask them to separately price out these bid alternates. So that's fluorescent. So whoever comes in as the most qualified bid, if their bid is within our budget, then we'll say, okay, you said it's going to be $4,000 for. We should be good. Oh, hold on, I lost my camera. Amy. Sorry.
Yeah, we're up back.
Okay, we're back. So, in order to, that's how we did Rose Avenue and it really makes them be, sharpen their pencil when they're pricing out those things that you want as extra because then they don't get to just lump sum it in, something that's cheap. They get to just roll it in and make it expensive, if that makes sense. So, we have the must-haves, we have the we really wants, which we're asking them individually to price out. I'm waiting on Ruben because it is public procurement. We have all these deadlines and dates and contracts. It's a nightmare to try and do it not prevailing wage. So, we're still, we're finishing up the bid documents. Wendy's chomping at the bit. I hear her. I feel ya.
I got the skate park builders, I got the Toma Hawk Foundation, I'm just like.
Yeah.
Is there a way that they can just ask for the bid, it's not coming from the city of Veronia? Because as soon as you say city of.
Not really, because we're going to end up insuring it. So, if we're going to have it built on our property, we typically have to either be part of that or doing it. We can't really just say, here, build this and then our insurance won't really take it.
Hasn't this been in Ruben's lap for over a month?
No, I don't know, I don't have my phone, so I can't validate or not validate the six-week thing. I think it's been a few weeks, but there's a lot going, there's a lot going on in the city that.
Yeah.
I can't really talk about publicly, so there's a lot of stuff going on. So he's been very busy with our issues and things.
Has he gave you any updates on it?
Well, we sent back and forth a draft of it. I tweaked some of it because, you know, when you give it to somebody, sometimes it's spoiler plate and it's way too long and kind of turns people off. And I'm like, do we need these, these sections? Because really, they're going to do designs and engineering and all of that anyway, so we've been going back and forth.
Sounds like we're, sounds like we're going to get there, you just have sometimes.
It's kind of a feast or famine thing and we're in like the feast where all these things are coming at the city with timelines and deadlines and we're trying to get it all done as quick as we can.
Counselor Webb, you want to add? Wendy, you happy?
I already is.
Well, we know what your priority is. We appreciate it.
How long has this taken? 20 years?
Too long. Too long is what we'd say.
Since 2017, so I mean, we are here, we are here, we're ready, you know, so it's just like super exciting, but.
I know the kids are ready for it.
Yeah.
It's like hurry up and wait.
Lived here long enough to talk about the senior center, you'll know she made that happen too. Might have been at the last, last year, but it got done, didn't it? Okay, let's move on to consent agenda for acceptance. Library board meetings, April 2021. Cemetery committee meeting minutes for May 2021 and park committee meeting minutes for April 2021. I've read them, I don't.
I've read them. I make a motion that we accept them.
Hold on, Counselor Webb.
No, I'm fine, I've read through them.
He was looking at me and he was going like this.
I can't see both ways. Okay.
Excuse me.
I'll second, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for May 17th, 2021 and city council meeting minutes for June 7th, 2021, page 14 through 16.
I wasn't here for the second one.
Oh, that's right. Okay, entertain a motion, if anybody wants to make one.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda for approval.
I'll make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rate review committee recommendation. Why, 21-2022, page 17.
So you guys, I sent you that recommendation with the proposed changes on just the utility page so that you could see it. So, the committee is made up of two public works committee members, two counselors and staff. We use the rate calculator, so we plug in the budget numbers and it spits out what we should be charging to meet our budget. We did tweak it a little bit to safeguard the whole reduction. It will be a utility rate reduction for most citizens. And so you'll see there that, if you look at the second page, that water base rate is going up from 29.50 to 31.70. Loan repayment stays the same at $7.15. The consumption rate goes up 15 cents from 1.80 to 1.95 per thousand gallons of water used. And then the savings are really in the sewer billing section. Sewer base rate's going from 26.90 to 22.25. The sewer loan repayment's going from $19.50 to $18.35 and the consumption charge per thousand gallons based on the winter time average is going from 2.60 to 2.35. So roughly, it's a four to five dollar decrease for the normal user.
And the multipliers stay the same?
The multipliers are based on the pipe size of the meter.
They're not changing.
Nothing changes on that, yeah. So you guys just received this recommendation where you really do the work is in the resolution and Stephanie printed out the whole master fee schedule with those changes as part of it. Because if you adopt the resolution, this will be the new most up-to-date master fee schedule for staff to use to charge the fees. And that starts July 1st, so they won't see it until, citizens won't see it until the August billing because we bill for the previous month, so.
Can I ask a semi-related question, please? When you have a residential meter that's three-quarter inch, what feeds that? What size line feeds that meter?
Well, typically, they could be, our number, our multiplier of one could be a 5/8 or a 3/4. Both of those are considered a multiplier of one, so it may just depend. It's either 5/8 or 3/4.
It could vary.
Yeah, both of those are charged as a one multiplier, so they both get charged just the base rate.
Maybe I didn't ask my question.
Okay.
You're talking about the tap.
Yeah, I'm talking about the size of the line coming into the meter and then you've got a 3/4 and a 1 and a 1 and 1/2 coming out of.
That will vary depending on when it was installed and what they were using.
They're inconsistent, but at least 3/4 coming into the meter at a minimum.
It could be 5/8s coming in.
Okay.
Yeah, so it just depends on historically what the city was installing on the other side of the meter at the time.
That would explain why some people don't have as much water pressure.
Or it could be where they're located. So some of the mains do 90s and that friction slows it down. It could also be how far away their house is from the meter because that distance of their lateral causes friction, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And if they have too much pressure, we could, we can always put a pressure reducer in there. So that's their problem.
I have too much.
You have too much?
There's a minimum we have to provide by the state. I forget what it is. I want to say it's 65 PSI.
About 80.
And, yeah, and you can, some people don't like high pressure, some people love it, so. Just depends.
I can hang on to the garden those four feet back and it'll straighten, clear out or go up.
That's good.
If you have to put on your shower, do you take your skin off?
Yeah.
Freshwater.
It's not bad there, it's just the outside process. Placed all the lines.
Okay, well.
So you guys don't need to do anything but accept this and then go deal with it in the resolution.
Get to page 23, there's a resolution to adopt or to read out back there.
Yeah, I think I'm.
More questions on rate review?
Looks like good work to me.
I know Webb knows all about it.
Went pretty seamless this time.
Yeah, I thought it went well. I mean, we had some questions.
Yeah.
Some qualifications, but overall, it worked as the system should. We did actually do a little modification in there and that's part of why the rate review committee is.
Me, yeah.
To take all information and instead of just, because if we just did the straight rate calculator, there would be no need for anybody other than somebody to throw it in it and that's it. There are other factors that go in, which staff provides. We need to count for some.
Right, and it's nice for the transparency for the citizens that when someone's looking at it, it's not just up, up, up. I mean, we've gone down the last, well, two of the last three years, we've had reduction.
That's great.
Yeah.
Truly good.
Yeah, I suspect that's coming to an end.
Potentially, but the goal is to maintain a stable rate and not have volatility up and down for the customer.
This is, this coming will be the fourth or fifth year.
I think fifth.
The fifth?
Oh, since the.
Since we built it, yeah.
So it, you know, it takes a while for things to flesh out to the system itself because we've been making slight modifications internally, the multiplier, I told you, the revenue multiplier instead of the meter multiplier.
Right.
Just slight, slight things that go in there. It hit pretty close except for the little extra on sewer. As far as, your goal for this is what you say you need and how close you come to hitting it. That's really the goal for this rate. And if you look at bench charts, we've been doing a very good job. Last year on the sewer, we, we should have did a rate review last year. That's what cost us there some.
Yeah, we should have upped it a little.
We went over, so that's why people are getting a good reduction this year.
Yeah.
I think I have a question for you. What's the capacity of our water tank?
I think it's a million gallon, isn't it?
Which one?
Yeah.
We have more than one. I know, I only know of the big one.
At Stony Point?
Yeah. That's the big one, isn't it?
I believe it is the bigger of the two.
It's a million, I believe.
And how, how is our water level at this point as far as restriction or?
Currently, we're not, the cubic feet per second aren't causing a need for water curtailment.
Okay, so we're still healthy. That's good. Excellent.
Okay, let's move on to new business B. De-annexation application by Mr. Dixon, page 18 and 19. Mr. Dixon.
I am, yes.
He told me he was going to be here.
They wrote this one for me. There's a letter in your packet from Mr. Dixon. I did a staff report at the beginning. Have you all had a chance to read it or shall I read it for the?
Yes, I get it. I have read it twice.
Perfect, so you know what this process is really. We need staff in order for Mr. Dixon to be able to de-annex from the city, you guys have to approve him applying to de-annex. That's summary.
I have a question for you, Mr. Dixon.
I don't have to say anything, you guys are going to go.
So they got ahold of you with, from the CZ Trail, huh?
Yeah.
And they wanted maybe use part of your land for a bridge, I understand?
They do, apparently. Well, there are two other possibilities. There's Karen and Frank Miller, who are on the other side of the bridge. They don't want to have anything to do with it. The old guy who owns the property between me and the bridge was totally against it too, but he died last year. And his kids are trying to sell his property.
Right.
And, was it worth it? 65,000, I would go. 25, same size, but the times gone, I think somebody bought it. So, surprise to me. But I don't know whether there, you know, will be a. But I don't know whether there, you know, be a, but the CZ Trail committee, you guys and I have been talking quite a bit over the last six months. And they think they can use my property. I'm gonna give this, you know, across the property or, my thing is, if I move the property line, that's a county thing, down toward that end. That's a section that I could just as easily just sell to the county if they wanted. Not much more than the easement cost them because it's really not worth that much. I have my due tech engineering report here. Cost me five grand and at the end of it says, we can't approve your building anywhere on that property.
Because of its sliding?
Yeah, that's a little slide, very little, can't approve it. Except on the very north end of the county lot where there's, I don't know if you know the area, there's a flat ground area in there.
I know it.
But of course, you know, the county-city line was right through the middle of it, so the setbacks, I mean, the side things, I can't build on the property. But I might could build, you know, a little, what the county calls a fishing accommodation, which is legal according to the government, so. I was thinking of doing that and I was thinking, you know, very few fishermen would ever rent that property. But with the CZ Trail and the, thanks for knowing each other, coming together there. Where's pack riders, bicyclists, hikers, all the people who use the trail, somebody might wanna rent it. I'm looking for two rooms to rent it. It could be a little moneymaker and then retire if I have a half gallon, I'm gonna get about a thousand dollars on it.
Welcome to the club.
And I've got a little mortgage count in like a little bit here. So that's my thought.
Sounds like you'll be over there at the county commissioner's office playing Let's Make a Deal one day, so.
Yeah, yeah, county people haven't been the most helpful people. They tend to not help me at all when I can do it. I find that out myself.
Right.
I have caught them telling me things that weren't true. I'm doing research and realize, oh, that wasn't true. So, anyway.
Well, one day you go over there to county commissioner's office, they're a pretty good bunch of people and maybe you can sit down and talk to one of them.
Yeah, I know Casey here pretty well. Counselor?
So you have, currently have water in sewer in the city of Burno?
No.
Or you don't have either?
No.
No, nothing.
Oh, okay. That helps me.
And you guys know where it is, right? So it's that little piece right here that's in the city. This is the other piece right here that's in the county. And basically, it's flat, it's right there and split the middle.
Right.
Is your piece the, that has the couple trailers on it?
Yeah.
So the county says you could use north of those little trailers? Or is, are the trailers located in that northern portion that you're talking about?
Well, yes, you see, the two trailers that are there, let's say the one and then my bigger one that I still, but I didn't want to come here to work. They're actually in the city. See, how many told me when I was gonna do this, said you can't have any trailer, you should have any equipment on your property at all. So I did research and I found out where the property line was and then I looked at the city. I don't know if, or if that's, it's like, you can park a trailer on your property as long as you don't normally live in it or stay in it. So I just moved them all over to the city side. So the county wouldn't have, but that doesn't seem, you know, there's so many hoops to jump. I'm just trying to go home.
All up questions, so the building you're gonna build and rent out, is it gonna be required to have water and sewer?
Is it required to have it?
Water and sewer?
Well, you see, I've talked to Miguel in the county group that's responsible for that. If I put a portable toilet there and if I put, I can put non-bottomed water there and then I'm, what I'm thinking, I'm having brought by, and yet to see if they're gonna pay it. It's just bottled water, drinking water. Now, I think she would pass. See, because the fishing accommodations are really for really rural places. So they don't normally have city water tubes.
So it's like a bunkhouse?
Yeah, kind of like a bunkhouse.
Place to sleep, but that's about it.
So do we have water and sewer running up that far? It could be close.
Yeah, so we have, yes, sewer, well, where these people had to connect the sewer when, because the county will make anybody within two hundred and fifty feet, if they're wanting to, or connect to city sewer. If they're past two hundred and fifty feet or if there's some sort of topographical problem, that someone could get away from that. But this parcel right here connects through this alley to the line of Hulk. That's, that's where that outside parcel's connected.
I didn't, they haven't kind of figured it out for me. It's gonna cost me at least twelve thousand dollars to have it up to my property, up to the city lot.
Yeah.
But of course, if we de-annex the lot, then the county and the city.
Bring it to, yeah, right.
Right, and I wanted to point that out. If you go into the county, we won't provide it for you, so, to you, so. And if the county doesn't okay your other proposition, then you're gonna be caught between the rock and hard spot.
Yeah, that's true.
I just wanted to check with staff, so I assume we have a variance process for setbacks?
Well, so if he's in the county.
But if he's staying in the city and wanted to build a structure.
He's so close to the river that he wouldn't qualify.
He wouldn't qualify? Okay.
It'd be a really hard argument to make.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that avenue wasn't available.
So it's almost more beneficial for him to be in the county because then he, and especially with this plan, he falls under kind of a different, not a home, single-family home and all the bells and whistles that come with that.
Yeah. So what's the, we give our blessing for him to move forward with the application is the way I take it.
Yeah, there's a, there's an action proposed.
It's in the. Costs. Costs to do, I assume.
Yeah, he would, with his application, he would have to pay the application fee.
That covers the cost.
Hard. Well, the insurance would be hard. He's gonna do that.
So, and that's one of the things is that we're hoping because we haven't done the UGB stuff that we would put this in with that, correct?
Well, he wouldn't have to apply to the county on his own.
No, but like.
So be five hundred dollars.
As far as moving the UGB line.
Correct.
That would be in our application that, where we're already moving the UGB, so we wouldn't have to second application. We'd just roll it all together.
Happy hearing them included though.
So it would save him the fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which he could probably care less if he's in the UGB or not.
No, but it'd be good, it'd be smart of us to clean it.
Smart for us to do it, no?
Yeah.
I concur with that.
The city lot's unbillable.
Yeah.
Should.
Counselor Williams?
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't allow the process to continue.
I don't either. I don't have a problem with it if that's what Mr. Dixon wants to do.
I kind of agree with, or the counselor over here, you're possibly between a rock and a hard place. But, you know, if you have a dream, if you have a dream, you gotta pursue it.
If I was.
You know, I'm not that hard of a guy, I'm ninety years now, and I pump around the city a little bit, and you know, I just love Burno. Love this town.
It's a great place.
I wanna spend some time in there.
Do you currently live here?
Huh?
You currently live in?
No, actually, we have a house in Portland.
Okay.
But my wife and I, and she just changed her mind this last year. We're gonna sell this next year. Probably taxes, I don't think it interests, yes, okay, but it, and then, it's all the unrest and everything. Southeast policing center is just a hundred and fifteen blocks from where we live and they're all over, right? I guess, they're right there and I've been, there've been several nights I've been making sure I have a gun in that room. And so where is that?
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you.
No doubt. No arguing.
So if someone can make that motion, yeah.
I'll make a motion directing staff to receive and process a de-annexation application from Mr. Dixon.
And I will second that.
Motion made.
And we wish you well.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'll shoot you an email tomorrow on next steps.
Okay.
That's good.
Good luck on it. If I was you, I'd go make an appointment with the county commissioners and play Let's Make a Deal.
Yeah.
They're gonna want an easement.
You want an easement?
I think you're already ahead of me on that one, so.
I wonder you talked to?
Casey?
Can you hear it?
And he kind of like, you know, he's kind of reticent about sticking his nose in with the, going to the services. If you know, when you go to the services people, they don't really answer. We have the rules, they do what they want, I don't blame anyone. Okay, well, we'll see. I couldn't appreciate Casey.
They get real nice when they want something from you, though. Well, good luck with that, sir.
Okay, thanks, you guys.
Okay.
Have a good evening, nice to meet you.
Okay, you too.
Thanks.
Business from the departments.
So we had a off, non-work injury, so chief's not here because we, scheduling's been a little tight. We're currently working with two officers in chief, so.
Okay, well, he's.
If you have questions about his report.
He sent his report, I've.
Email him or give him a call.
I've looked at it, he's got a pie chart there for us.
Yeah.
Have we had any more discussions with the county sheriff?
No, we have other stuff kind of going on behind the scenes until that gets settled, then, yeah, gonna have to wait. We've notified him, we're not ignoring him, we're trying to get our ducks in a row and then we'd be open to it. He's sent us a draft, like a intergovernmental agreement, but we haven't, like, done a back and forth because I want to make, make, do the work before we know, could all pan out, so.
What is an incomplete nine-one-one call?
Say again?
An incomplete nine-one-one call, is that somebody calls in and?
Hangs up, hangs up, or, or says never mind, or it was a kid, or, it could be a lot of things.
Could be a, you know, what dial?
Yeah, yes.
Have to investigate this.
Yeah.
Be detailed.
Yeah, and I see the call volume, time of day work that you requested. Yeah, I have high charts, half the information that I got, yeah.
Do you need other information you wanted to bring?
Yeah, I'll talk to the chief about it. He had to manually go through it or something, I don't know. I was curious to who responds to what we asked, so.
Who responds, like, in their timing?
Yeah, how many officers are, like, this officer's responded to this many calls in the last couple of months. This officer reported, responded to this. I kind of want to know who's doing, who's getting all the calls. I can tell by the chart, by times a day, but that splits in, that splits from days to nights. So you really don't know night shift versus day shift, what the, what the actual call volume is and who's fielding the calls, you know? But I can meet with him and get that probably the exact information.
Sorry. No, it wants me to do something with the new program and so it keeps switching to just looking at me. I could be hitting a button, I just don't know. My hands go all over the place, so. I can't. Four, no, no, I think that. My screen's frozen. You guys can continue on, they can hear you, I just.
Our mics are on.
They said I look awesome though, so that's nice.
They're not really bad, they're still mirrors.
Yeah.
Someone gave you a thumbs up?
It would be red. Oh, me. Can you please confirm that you hear us?
Hear us.
This is Susan and I can hear you.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Yeah. It's just that they can only see me right now, which is fine.
When I was riding along, I was surprised. Everybody before I got to. Watched the radar, turned, full attention. After you, yeah. Cars, whatever. Hey. Thursday or something. I think we have a little, we have a. You call the best fifteen. All the good. Right, I know all. What a wonderful thing. Hot side of the day. Yes. Friday Saturday, right? Thursday. Okay, move on to ordinances, resolution. Resolution coming twenty-one, twelve.
You guys can continue on, just ignore it.
No longer here for public use, coordinating, saving, property. So a couple of years back, we got two four escapes from a different jurisdiction. One is still used for private enforcement. Back on side of that. They had planned that maybe they would, everyone was some sort of admin car or car that, you know, became our, which for people, it then would. Nine, uh, they do do city buildings with their own vehicles. It just never panned out like that. Most of the city business, some are already going somewhere and letting them pick some apps and we pay the cost and then coming back. So just never really got used. And so ultimately, they decided, or we use, we're sold out. So that's the bus, one shifts down. I mean, that's a perfect. What was he doing? Doesn't keep selling, it's fine. Maybe yes, or, yeah, I think I can get some. I don't know what the water. But I guess. No, they're not, they're not that, it's just. They're not, they're not that, it's just, it's not being. Going to. Yeah, yeah.
So why you're sitting?
If we go back to.
Just take care of it.
Ultimately, we. Are all looking at the active rate. For the new job. Currently, currently, don't worry, definitely. Actually, what I happen to be made by a small. Home rather or something, and have public works use that, and then get one of the public works. Currently. Our son, Beta, and you. For it. Now, he's basically posted, you can do it on, posted yourself, and posted the actually, there's a property. Clearing out where you do a, a.
Did a Craigslist last time, in Facebook. For vehicles.
Uh, you got three thousand, yeah, the other. No, I mean, I see it had a couple of things that were released.
I made a motion. Congratulations, resolution.
You'll see on your desk in front of you the attachment. All the fees, none of the fees changed except for what was in the rate review recommendation.
We're doing the least.
No, that's the currently, the primary. The dry, yeah, we don't have a charge for the upcoming new campaign on this. Different, yeah, sorry. Yeah, none of those have changed, those are all concurrent, so.
He's with the Boy Scouts.
And they're.
I can't. Uh, in part, those. Four hour rule.
That's, that's everyone.
All addresses everybody, but.
Use serving groups.
Right. Nobody's been changed. No, so users, they see them, right?
Okay.
The flat rate first. The place hall, and two teams that hold their one fee for their base halls. So.
No, it's go to meetings detected that I have new software and new hardware, and it wants to update it for me, I don't want it to do that right now. Because we are in a meeting.
Right, I made a motion. Second that, okay. I don't know if you have no one. I see you guys. I have to read a couple of letters.
It's Thomas from the floor.
Those ones were seven that wanted, like.
Read it, yeah.
Yeah. So if it was like a, like a invite to the city county dinner, that would be in correspondence.
Right.
Or an invite to listen to Susan Bonamici speak, that's correspondence.
You know, there was somebody concerned about blocking their. There was a lady who.
That wasn't this, that was, that wasn't last meeting, that was several ago.
Read that to the council.
I read them aloud.
And then there's the files.
There it is, so.
Or I can email it to you.
Yeah. Anything in the files.
Oh, so, on which here.
Ashley. The one who emailed me questions, and then just submitted a letter.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we'll just, I'll shoot it, you know, email tomorrow. If I forget, email me and remind me, yeah.
I could hear.
I'll just shoot it to everybody. Tomorrow.
Yeah, I just.
And topics report, that way, whatever someone said, and if you write the bar, direct staff, something, that is already spot. Correspondence is typically not discussed or directed to happen. Reportment, that's why you. Or if you want to, they know what you're saying. Get back to that person, or to that you, that's. Well, and then topics report typically, if it's something like that, an out person. They do. Make them copy, so they have it. For the person, topics on the floor, great, I mean, what, and you get a copy, or whatever they're saying, you just mess that up.
Yeah, it, it was rare that they would provide written testimony, that they would just be here speaking.
Not be mad, not have heard everything.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, then, in other cases, I mean, it's some of these things taught on topics that we're trying to make decisions on. And it's kind of evidence to support positions, you know, I mean, our constituents are saying this, you know.
Right.
So. What was her issue, general topic again, I'm trying to remember, I think it's in the.
She had multiple things she was asking about.
She would like to see sidewalks on Rose Avenue, she loves that idea, she had issues with paint under the ODOT bridge.
That's right.
She liked that we're doing downtown beautification. And I think that was it, I'd have to look, those are the ones that are popping out, I mean.
Gotcha. Good, yeah, I'm good, city administrators report.
Okay, so, we have a lot going on. So, I know that the Klatzup, there isn't a paper, JR, sorry. I know that the Klatzup sewer, I had given you guys an update on that, we're currently in kind of legal back and forth with one of the neighbors that's unhappy with the project. So, can't really speak anymore to that, other than that's kind of stalling us putting it in. So we have all the materials, we have the manholes, the piping, we're ready to go, we're just kind of stuck with where the logs are going, and. Lengths and kind of some issues with that. Hopefully that will be remedied, we did kind of return all their requests for public records, like, the next day, so they have all the information they had wanted. We didn't stall that at all, we want them to understand that we did our due diligence on this project, so we send all that stuff forward to them. The surveys for the downtown businesses will be taking place this week, there's a couple businesses that only, I've, I've searched their phone on White Pages, I'm a premium member to get like background information, I pay for a service. And they only have a mailing address. And they have no person's name, it's a, it's a LLC and a mailing address, and that's the only information you can find out about them, so we'll be sending those. I did talk to someone, left a message for someone in Minnesota to do the survey for the US Bank, because that's where all their property transactions go, so there's. Three that we may have a hard time getting responses from, the rest of them are pretty local or accessible via phone or email. So that should get done this week. I'd like to have council check their calendars and approve July tenth, Saturday, July tenth. From nine to twelve for the council member interviews. We're going to have, uh, they have tournament by June thirtieth. And I think, I believe we have three or four, three, three, potentially a fourth one coming in, we. And then we have three for the citizen panel so far, three members that would come to interview on behalf of the citizens. The goal would be that council would do their interviews here, and I've kind of reserved before the libraries open for the citizen panel to be at the library. Is there anyone that's, that date does not work at all? Okay.
That's got to be the second Saturday, right?
Well, that's okay, Ange can step in, yeah.
Yeah, that's my, that's my birthday, four years ago camping, and I think my grandson might be here.
So, can you guys pick a date that works, because ultimately.
It's about any other day, but.
We're trying to get it so that you could, the new person could get sworn in on the nineteenth.
We can't do it the week before?
Fourth of July?
That's my birthday!
You do it on the fourth, then.
Um, one.
Friday, you could do it on a Saturday?
Typically, you do it on a Saturday, because you don't want to prohibit the people that work full-time from being able to be interviewed. That's, that's what we've done historically, because there's nobody, we don't want to have someone to take time off to maybe be a counselor, I guess.
Do it in the evening?
Could we do it in the evening?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still, I don't think it helps JR.
No, no, but I mean. No, weekday.
Oh. We'd have to find a different spot for the citizen panel, because typically, on the weekdays, the library's open till seven.
I thought the citizen panel went first.
They go simultaneously, you only ask those people to come on one day that want to be on council, and they go to one interview, and they go to the other interview, you get them all.
Seven?
Well, depends on the day.
So.
Depends on the day you're picking.
Seven, then library on most days.
I don't have my, I left my phone at home, otherwise I could check when they're open, and when they're open till, so.
I'm just suggesting that, I mean. If weekends are kind of tight, but as far as accommodating a working person, a seven o'clock or seven-thirty meeting, they should be able to make.
But they're gonna, so this is the only thing, if you have three applicants, that's three hours that potentially. So that's like a seven to ten, if you have more applicants, it's seven to eleven, that's a long, right, that's a long time. That's why we typically have done it in the mornings, because then if it's long, it's like nine to one, or nine to noon, or nine to two, or, you know. For the daytime stuff.
Would you be able to meet earlier on a weekday, JR?
On a weekday?
Or you don't put them in until the August meeting. And we just go later.
Friday. I just don't want to make any commitments to that day, because I know I'll be, I'll get.
That's a bad day for me.
The library closes at five on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Yeah, I mean, I can always come home an hour early or something, or two hours or something, if I know what's coming up.
So what'd you say?
The library closes at five on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
So you could do, that, that still doesn't work if someone works out of town, I was thinking start at five on a Friday, but then.
We could schedule it, so somebody who works out of town would be a later interviewer. Somebody who's.
How many people, how many people fit in?
Three.
Three, so far.
And another person took a packet, so we don't know if they'll turn it.
When's the deadline?
June thirtieth.
So we got three, four, maybe five, so, and they can't go just boom, 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 they have to do one at a time, can't do group interview?
No.
Really?
Why would you want to do a group interview?
You sit there and ask each one of them the same question, they can answer it or something, I mean. Yeah, but they, last guy gets the bill, mom, and everybody else's answer.
Right, or his answer gets taken by the first guy, and then he hasn't, well, you know, or.
I guess that's true, you'd have to mix them up enough, but it might be hard to mix them up enough.
And that's the thing, you're supposed to ask them all the same questions, to be fair, you can always ask follow-up questions if they share something, but you're supposed to be even, you're supposed to ask the same, some, so.
What's the following sound?
Yeah. Well, it'd be the seventeenth, right? Oh, that's June, yeah. Yeah, because if the tenth is, so what about the seventeenth?
So how's that work when we all get four or five people here, and we're going to sit up here and go a or nay, or are we going to.
No, you're.
Point system like Banks did.
You're going to score them, and not share with them what the.
Like a one through four, and then we add them up later? Because I think that's what Banks did when they drew somebody.
Yeah, so you'll have like a, you'll, you'll individually score them, and those papers will be collected, right, and then the next person comes in, you score them, but those papers, right? And same way they will, they'll come up with a recommendation, so typically, at the end of all the interviews, your tallies are figured out, their recommendation comes over to you guys, and you. Discuss, you know, is it the same person they, the citizens think that we think, and then. You do it, you pick who it is.
Is this going to be in a regular council meeting?
It will have to be a noticed, I want to say council, yeah.
Public meeting.
So, so the interviews, wouldn't it be, well, the interviews, I think they can be, someone can be there, the audience can be there, they can't participate. And then you'll hold a regular meeting for your open discussion about whoever. And then you'll hold a regular meeting for your open discussion about whoever.
I'm a little unclear.
Okay.
So over at the library, they'll be looking at like a resume and they'll make a recommendation to us.
No, they're gonna interview the same people.
They're gonna ask them questions, just like.
They're, they're representing the.
Just rotate.
Yes, they're representing the voter.
Yeah, okay.
Signs up for the citizen.
I got it.
So that you're actually hearing from constituents what they saw. And that may determine what, how you feel. It may be the opposite of what you feel, but at least they're, they feel heard.
Is that gonna be hard to get a citizen panel?
Well, we have three already. Three members that will sit on it already that have filled out applications and turned them in.
But we need.
So we'll do one more push.
Need five to eight, right?
Five would be ideal.
Five would be ideal. Five to seven. I think there were seven last time. But we'll do one more push and reminding people if you, hey, if you're interested in being counselor, turn it in. And if you're, you know, put it on the website and then someone can share it. It's a kindness.
We can't even bribe them to want to do the job with a donut or something, can we?
So the seventeenth?
That's the following Saturday.
Yeah, like nine to noon.
So can I?
Okay.
And is Rick, and Rick will be back, but I don't know if he's free, but probably.
So ultimately the scores that will, will the candidate that we accept be based just on the score?
No, it's however.
Well, you're gonna score them on how well you think they're a fit to your council and how well they understand the job.
Right.
They're coming into, right? So your score will be representative of basically how you feel about the person.
You could do like a one to four.
Yeah.
And the lowest, the lowest or highest.
What I'm getting at is it's not just based on that score. We deliberate, we deliberate as to who.
Yeah, you guys would, you, the score for each person, all of your scores would be put together and tallied, right? So if you gave them one, you gave them a four, you gave them a two, it's gonna be like a three on that person.
An average.
Right, an average, so.
Okay.
And then you'll discuss, okay, here's the scores they received and what did we feel about it?
Okay.
It's a, it's weird because it happens so rarely. It's gonna be odd for you guys. It's gonna feel uncomfortable to.
Won't bother me.
Well, I'm just saying like, you're gonna.
Yeah, and you gotta deliberate in front of the public too.
Right, so you gotta be a little bit more cautious that you're not.
Yeah.
Throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, burning bridges, so to speak.
Well, ultimately, we'll do the.
Well, we're just trying to pick the best person out, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
That's our job to pick the best person.
Right. So the seventeenth, I'll set up the library. And then, I mean, you could potentially, if you picked that person, you could, you could, we could put it on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, sure.
For the nineteenth. That's what I was trying to get is you guys to have somebody by August, basically.
What time are you thinking, saying?
Nine, it'll start at nine. Interviews will start at nine, so you'll probably get here at eight thirty, get your coffee, water, whatever. And the fir-, we'd set up the first interview to start at nine, the first person.
Okay.
And so then potentially they'll start with someone at nine and it'll just be like that.
And yours right here.
Yeah. Okay.
It's gonna be interesting.
It's only like four or five questions, right?
I, I don't.
That's, I'm gonna bring to your July seventh meeting the draft questions they used last time for you to look them over and tweak them if you want before we get there.
That'd be good.
Okay, um, so we had the Travel Oregon kickoff meeting, which was kind of hilarious because I'm the one that spent the most money so far getting this, getting the, all of our products ordered and built and and the uh, pocket park and the murals are kind of behind the eight ball as far as it goes. Um, the trash enclosures are ninety percent complete. They're all built. Uh, they have to be sealed and the planter box needs to be uh sealed either the rubber membrane or something like that in a, a paint on. And then the um art still needs to be taken off the old ones and attached to the new ones. The fish and elk and whatever else. I think, is it a bear? I don't know. Um, and then I have new doggy cleanup bag. Things that are gonna go on basically every other one, so it's not like everyone has a doggy cleanup bag. Um, and then following that, so there will be a point when you'll drive through town on a Tuesday afternoon and there will not be a garbage can because once I get the art off of them and the good garbage, the still usable round garbage cans out of them, Waste Management is just gonna drive by on a Tuesday morning and throw them all in the truck. So there'll be kind of a, little bit of a lapse between the new ones coming out in that Tuesday. Um, we also have, the water fountain is here. We ordered that and that's been delivered. And then um, we're ordering online. So we were kind of in a tricky spot because we're right at the end of the fiscal year. We don't want to do anything that can't get paid by June thirty that will roll over into the next one to get invoices and outstanding. We'll get a finding on the audit if we do that. So um, I'm having in my cart to order the brackets, the baskets, the coconut fiber that goes in the bottom of the baskets. And since that would be on a credit card or a debit card, it will flow into next month's bill, so Angie said I could do it. So I'm gonna get those ordered. Um, the drip line stuff should be coming. And Hamer Electric's done their first kind of peruse of what light poles still need um electrification and kind of reminded themselves since we did the first ones two years ago. He was like, what exactly did I do here? You know, so he went and looked at all of them. So the murals, so there's three murals in this grant that the Portland Street Art Alliance is um, kind of spearheading that part of the project. We went over the potential mural sites, um, and what the owners were looking for and having as far as um, the theme of, most of them are bike-related, trail-related, fishing-related. Um, there's one, if, if Muffy's gets it, it's maybe more of a classic fifties theme. Um, so there's some kind of differences in what the different owners wanted. Um, but the walls up for potential murals are the long wall of the parking lot at its century or RNS Market. So after that metal roof, that wall there. Um, the one little wall of the Lesby Building, which is the white building next to the Brunsmen. Kind of just a, more of a small square that either they were looking at having like um, community-supported agriculture or farm-to-table or something because that pocket park is gonna be like a outdoor seating for the Island Grill. So there's a door that comes right out of the back of that side of the building. And so I don't know if you've noticed, but they're terracing that and getting a little dirt on the road. We've talked to them about that. Um, but they're gonna be doing kind of some outdoor seating, so that's what they wanted. Um, and then potentially the Dentist's Building, the, the Hallam. What's it called?
Professional Center.
Yeah, um, Rock Creek.
Rock Creek Professional.
Um, potentially like a salmon on the Dewey Pool side and like maybe a bike along the wall that looks like a bike's leaning there on this parking lot side. So they're doing little, small ones, kind of a, more of finding gems instead of like huge walls like they have in Cornelius or places like that. Um, and so they have to, the artist is gonna do a draft. They have to get a permit, a signed permit to make for city and make sure there's no advertising in the draft. And then the, of course, the owner has to sign off on it. Um, so that they're planning on doing that August twenty-sixth through September fourth will be their kind of mural painting week and a half. Um, and then on Sep-, Saturday, September fourth, they're gonna do kind of a mural day. Hands-on Arts is gonna do sidewalk chalk activities for kids. Some of the local vendors and five oh and C threes that haven't had a chance to make money during COVID are gonna kind of be stationed on private property selling different little snacks, treats. Some of the food truck people will be in town, so kind of like a little day just to celebrate the new murals and everyone walk around town and see what it is. I did remind them that's Labor Day weekend and they may not get the foot traffic they wanted. Um, so related to that, October second is Salmon Festival. And that's the deadline we're all trying to hit with all the, all the fixes being done by October second so that we can invite Travel Oregon out to go on like a tour of all of the things that their grant paid for and have them see it all freshened up and new banner, the hanging baskets, the banners, the, I don't know how we'll prove the electricity unless we like light, put a couple things lit up or something. Um, and then the resetting the papers where there are trip hazards, that'll all be done. So. It's a lot going on with the Travel Oregon Grant, but it seems like we're ahead of the other, we're like, yes, keep going. Um, we did, we're able to buy the lumber very reasonably, actually a couple thousand dollars less than the other bids I got for lumber out of Columbia County from a Columbia County business on Highway thirty, Dolgrin's. Um, Eric Dolgrin got us some sweet deals and found a cedar uh supplier that made a stay-in budget. Basically, I put a budget in before the lumber market went crazy. And then when I got the bids back, they were like two thousand dollars over what the bid was. And the bid was a pretty solid price, what I estimated. And so I was like, oh my gosh, we're not gonna be able to do it, but he was able to make it happen and get us what we needed. And then um, we did a contract with Alan Hind who had built the original ones. And I gave him the, the wood on a Wednesday and on the next Tuesday he delivered them all. So. Yes, we're, we're trekking along. So that was great. And they look great and they're gonna be a really nice update down there. Um, so the goal was to get Klatzup done before the end of the fiscal year. We've switched our goal because we're having issues up there. The goal now would be to get the Lakeview Sewer that comes down the alley. Um, because the current sewer main is on those people's property too close to their homes, the little mill houses there. So we'll be putting in the sewer main and some saddles, just a connection out. It will be on them to connect their old one to the new one. They could do it at the same time. They could even on the side contract with the same contractor to just get it over with for a price if that's what they want to do. But they'll have six months to get reconnected before we decommission the line they're currently on. Um, so that's the one we're gonna try and hit before the end of the fiscal year since those two are kind of both supposed to happen in this fiscal year, but.
Does that affect that brand new home they just built down there?
No, because they come, they come straight down themselves. They don't go up and then down. This will just be Oviets and the different homes along there between that alley.
Talking of getting that done in this fiscal year?
That's what the goal is. It's really just pipe in the ground, right? And it's not a huge deal.
Started tomorrow, all you probably.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's the goal that Robert is, you know, he's in, he's sent us an invoice. He's wanting to do the job. So that's still the goal.
So that rock down at the lake, is that for that project?
Same, did they, I haven't been down to the lake, they'll, they probably stockpiled it there, yeah. I haven't been down there to see. I barely get out of the office anymore. It's kind of frustrating, but I like to see what they're doing. Um, and then uh, we did get all the trees out of Hawkins. Um, we took the last couple loads to the pulp mill. There was kind of a citizen in the community that gave the contractor we were working with heck that he was taking from the city and saying things like that. And he's like, I am not taking any more of this wood for you. And so I said, what's our alter, our, our alternative? And um, Mike said, well, we could take it to the pulp mill and see if they'll take it. They were willing to take a little bit of cottonwood, so the city, I think, got six hundred dollars off all the loads he took there or something. Twenty-seven dollars a load and then you have to pay for trucking or whatever. Um, so that got mostly done. The goal is that the dam would, they're prepping for it to go in Wednesday. Um, they were getting all the stuff loaded into the different vehicles, so Jeff gets back on Wednesday. And Jeff's had an injury out of work and so he's lining the guys out and here most days to check in with them, but he's also trying to do physical therapy for his injury, so. We're just kind of playing a little bit handicapped here with, with all the issues, so trying to keep things rolling. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, when's our next, we're, we're gonna have our evaluation process start pretty soon, right?
First meeting in July.
First meeting in July, okay, uh.
This is when you get the papers.
You get the papers and pick the date that you're gonna.
You had indicated to me you might want to have a meeting to kind of, all these projects are raining down upon you.
Yeah.
Kind of give us a heads up.
Priorities.
Fight of that meeting.
Yeah, well, partly because we have things that all have the deadlines. And then you guys in the budget have added things. So I kind of wanted to sit down, have an understanding of here's what's currently on the plate and when their deadlines are. And then see what we could, because I know our dream was to get like the bathrooms totally done and the, and the, you know, showers totally done and all these things. But on top of injuries and, and vacant or missing employees for other things, we're trying to, I need you guys to tell me what's the most important to you. Because we got a year's worth of work to try and tackle in the next six months, basically. So I want to, I think probably, um, you know, the, and certain things have weird timelines. So the logging, furrowing in for the logging and getting that cut at the right time so that you could plant those and come the rainy season and just different things like that. They all have their own.
One more.
Scheduling, uh, so I kind of want to pick your guys' brain on what would you, what's, what can get moved to spring? You know, and some of it will just be hired out so that those things can happen without staff. But the things on staff's plate is a lot for the next ninety days or whatever. So I wanted to talk with you guys about kind of priorities. Um, with, you know, we have that running list and then we've added the new things for the new budget. So kind of redoing that priority thing. I don't know if you guys want to do it the four of you, wait till your new person's on. I don't know. I just wanted to chat about that.
I know that early in my term, uh, there were things that I knew nothing about. So a new person would probably be at a disadvantage.
Yeah, but I mean, it, but if, if you did want them to be part of it, they could come in and kind of get the rundown from.
Yeah.
Tap if they've wanted, if you wanted them to be part of it, ahead of it. So, and I think, what did you say? Their new, what did they decide for their, when is the actual evaluation date?
Fourth Monday.
Of.
Sure.
Oh, okay. So you get the paperwork, the first Monday, the first Monday, and the fourth Monday is when we have to do my evaluation. We could make them. I think making them both the same day is a little bit hairy. The priorities meeting and the evaluation is a little bit, a lot for all of us to get through. So I'm almost thinking we do want the priorities one either before or after evaluation. I don't.
Is this your yearly evaluation, not the quarterly?
Yeah, it's the annual, yeah.
The annual, what, end of July?
Yeah.
Although we use.
You use.
List as part of the, but we don't need to be doing the prioritization.
Right.
At that meeting.
Right. You can, you can use that to see mark, benchmarks hit or not hit. You would use the current priorities list, right?
Right.
Then we need to really talk about the ones we've added on and what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where they're gonna fit. Other works is due for another report too. It's just, is he able to do that?
Yeah, I could get, we could get that figured out. It's weird because he's kind of off on injury. So he's popping in because he can't help himself and he's so diehard that makes sure everything happens just with all the stuff. But yeah, we could have him do that.
This is, is this, is this good training for our, our other?
It is. They've really stepped up and they're taking on and learning things and figuring stuff out as it goes.
Out of the nest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be brutal.
At least they can still say, this is going on, what's the deal? You know, he's still available.
Yeah, and that's great.
Yeah. So you have any other questions for me?
There was something in this packet about potholes. Is that what some, one of the citizens complained about? Spencer Park, or the Hawkins Park potholes or something?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I already had those filled.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
And then the graffiti under the bridge. Now, that's a highway forty-seven bridge, but it's in our city, and our kids are looking at something gross under there.
I, I don't know what's under there. Typically, we don't touch their bridge.
Police, and they didn't know either. They hadn't been under the bridge, so I haven't been myself.
Yeah. Typically, we don't mess with ODOT's stuff. I can put a call in to Manning and ask them. They're gonna think we're a little picky that it's under the bridge and not visible from anywhere unless you're crawling under there, but I can ask them to come remedy it.
Book and see if there's.
I've been meaning to. I just want to make sure it's nothing really gross. We got all the swimming kids coming.
Yeah.
We all we'd have to do is hit it with the pressure washer probably. It's so dirty, it'd probably come off, you know?
Yeah, probably has some dirt underneath. I don't know.
Send Casey down if he's rolling.
I could, I could see, yeah, right. He always is rolling great, you know, something.
And they think, hey, there's a great place to do more.
Right, yeah.
And then, um, uh, um, the Spencer Park reader board. I know it's not probably the highest on there.
So we, the reader boards at the school, uh, we went there and unpackaged it cuz they pulled the pole from the other side and they rehabbed it. They redid the cabinet, painted that. And when we opened the box, there's no welded-on mechanism for it to hook to a circular pole, which is what they said we were going to get. I don't know that we can send this twenty-seven thousand dollar thing that came in a huge crate across country back. So the plan is to get four-inch steel square poles and just have it be on two poles. Both sides of.
There's no hole for it to attach in the middle?
It, it, um, flanks the pole. That's, cuz there's two sides, right? And they're both, they both have kind of housings behind them for fan and ventilation and heat stuff. And it's all weatherproof, but they basically flank a pole typically on both sides.
I thought we saved the poles at all, no?
We did save the pole. The sign does not have a bracket in the center to suck tight to a pole. It has bars on the top and bottom that you would like affixed to something square. So, the plan is to just do basically two square tube poles and flank it like that. Put the cabinet, put a plate on there and put the cabinet up above that, that has like a, I think it says, welcome to, what does it say? Welcome, Jesse did it, welcome to, and then it has the Oregon and the little star where Vernonia is, kind of. She did the graphics for it. Jim picked.
It's it.
So, it's that, you know, her sticker that's like the state of Oregon with the star and says Vernonia, Oregon.
Oh.
So that's on there, and then I think it says welcome to on the white part.
So who's doing the rest of the work? Is it all up to the city?
Well, we're all paying to collectively. So, um, the, so that's what Jim and I had a conversation. We're sourcing the poles that we need. The only kind of silver lining of it is our old pole with how it needed to be attached to the ground was gonna keep that reader board too close for comfort for all of us to where somebody could mess with it. So with the new poles, we actually have the kind of freedom to put it up higher, a little bit less reachable. So, yeah, the city will be that, doing the install of the two square poles, and then it just gets mounted to that. So that's where we're at with it, trying to get it done, cuz man, there's tons of things we could share with the public on different things, and we definitely want to have it in for.
Is that a footing we could incorporate with pouring the one up at the cemetery or?
No, um, yeah, oh, yeah, we could do that. Ben just did some back and forth with the engineer about height and kind of depth, and the engineer's like, well, you should do a slab, and we're like, we don't want a slab. We, we want something coming out of the ground that will hold that flagpole up with the plaque, Mother's War Memorial on it, not a big old. So, they did a tweak to that. Um, we did call the other two concrete things and they said, well, Angie said they laughed at her, and then they told her they couldn't do any concrete till September. So the goal is, I called ODOT today. I'm trying to get them to stamp our plans because we've had the plans back and forth to them a number of times. And then potentially what we're gonna do is re-contact John Swart and say, look, if we have these engineered plans, could you pull them off and we'll go jackhammer the stuff out of there? And even support you to get these in, because if we don't get them in, then that prohibits us from applying for the twenty-twenty-two money. And ODOT, it's their money, and they're the ones stalling us. And so we sent an email to the, at the Small Cities Allotment Team and said, what's our options here? We can't get stamped plans from you. Why they don't have just something they hand you and say, build to this specification? I don't understand why that is, but they don't. Um, they won't give you specifications, so we're kind of waiting on figuring out what they can do, cuz the SCA for twenty-twenty-two deadline is July thirty-first.
Well, most cities have their public work standard. It's in their standards. If it's a larger city, I wonder if we could borrow their standard from, that has all that stuff.
No, we have our stan- we have our plans turned in. ADA, and they engineered everything. And I called Calvin today. I said, where's the stamp? What do you, you're holding us up. This is ridiculous. So hopefully, we sent emails and called them today. Hopefully, I'll get some turnaround.
They're still working from home.
Probably. So, that's where we're at with that, but we definitely want to get that done, cuz we'll wanna.
Add it to a hundred thousand bucks.
Right.
Add it to the list.
Yeah, it's on there. I drive through town and my, my brain's like ping, 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 ping.
I was gonna mention, I'm not against having the mural at the Sentry, but since it was kind of like that, we were thinking downtown. Uh, something else that kind of brought to my mind was what about, uh, like Hawkins Park, the side of that smooth CMU? And like a logging show theme or something, the bathroom. It's small, it's plain, it's not rough.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, cuz I wasn't on the mural part of it, the Street Art Alliance.
You don't have any choice in the?
Well, they went through town and like basically asked who was willing to do it, and Travel Oregon wants them to be, you know, seen and blah, blah, blah. And so we, at one point, all of them were that end of downtown, and I'm like, no, we gotta spread this out so that you see one at Muffy's, you see one at Sentry through the courtyard of Dana's. You, you'll be able to see that whole one. By Stacy's Building, by the Rock Creek thing, like all these. We need to kind of have these gems as you drive through one way or the other and see it. Um, and so that's what they're trying to do is hit all those marks with different owners.
Okay.
I don't know that we couldn't say, hey, in the future, we'd love a, you know, Vernonia wildlife scene on this, but as part of the grant and what buildings they pitched, it was in this downtown block, so.
And you think the flowers are gonna get here in time to actually be big enough and grow? Are you gonna have to order bigger ones?
I think we'll probably have to order something that, that is a little summer fall for this first round by the time we get them hung up in the drip lines in.
We need to probably talk to a provider and tell them what we got coming down the.
Yeah, I talked to Means Nursery, how to, over there, cuz we're trying to do everything with the keep it local, so. I was gonna, you know, Means has pretty good production, so they'll have some of the smaller nurseries, they're kind of at the end of their production with the vegetables and the summer annuals and all that kind of thing. So Means has a little bit more year-round production, so I'm, asked them, and then I asked Rachel also for the planters on top of the garbage cans to come up with some drought tolerant, that we could get some fall color out of them. We can always have the spring color with annuals next year.
And you said October, right?
Would be the deadline for everything being up.
Guess we could wrap some corn stalks on that.
Yeah, I think you can, I think there's a lot of like different fall foliage that you could do, and then potentially what, if we're smart about it, we'd put in some sort of perennial for this first round. And then when we take them down, we'd actually use them somewhere in town. Because really, the ones that are the pretty baskets are not perennial flowers. So, if we're smart, we'll spend our money with the grant getting perennial things that could be put in pocket parts, could be put around City Hall, at Hawkins, in a flower bed at Shea. You know, like something that we could use as landscaping for the future. And then really hit the annuals come next spring. It didn't really work out timing-wise cuz they awarded it and did the kickoff meeting in the end of June, so everyone's been growing those pretty baskets for two and a half, three months, but.
Boy, had the ones in Forest Grove are about the size of me, where they're getting them from, are they, are they well anchored, are they? Um, they're, they're on a, I didn't say that. Well, no, oh.
He had something else in mind.
No, I'm saying, I'm, I'm sorry to describe the bracket they're on, you. Yeah, I'm gonna ignore that.
One of the things that I really like, and I don't know if you looked, but Sam and Eleanor at Blue House, they have something that like cascades down out of their baskets. I don't know if you've ever noticed that. It's like a green, almost like a waterfall, so, um, I'm gonna stop in there and be like, what, what is that? That would be cool to have just, cuz sometimes the flowers go all around, and then it's kind of cool to have a little bit of something else interest. So, we'll see. Any other questions for me?
Anything, Grant? The only thing I have is kind of a personal thing. I had a hip replaced five years ago, and they told me that eventually I'd have to have the other one.
Yeah.
I'm getting really close to having to do the right one. And I'm gonna work with the doctor, I, the best I can, so I don't miss too much. Like I don't want a surgery on Monday when there's a meeting, you know, I try to get it on Tuesday or whatever. I'm, within a week, I was pretty mobile. I'm optimistic that this will be the same, but just wanted to give you a heads up that I might miss a meeting or two.
We can zoom you. Yeah, you can still zoom in.
Well, that's true, but you know, you know, after surgery, when you're in a lot of pain, you're pretty goofy.
That's true.
And you're not supposed to be making.
So you, it's the entertainment.
There might, there might be a decision-making problem.
Yeah, that's.
Where they say, don't make any legal decisions and don't drive for a couple two days or whatever.
Well, you're not, you're really not supposed to drive for six weeks.
Oh, yeah, just to.
But I, I weaned myself off of the hard stuff pretty quick.
Yeah.
But it does take a couple weeks.
Well, it's okay to miss a meeting if you're.
Well, I just wanted to have a heads up that there could be a curveball coming this summer.
Hey, Rick, someone right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we gotta have five.
I know.
Always one down.
Yeah, you gotta get stuck up to.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can move on to items from the mayor and councilors.
Oh, I thought that's what that was.
You know, wait your turn. You had your turn. You got anything, Grant?
Yep. Uh, interesting observation. Down at the lake this year, I got Sean Adonah who's helping me run the pump this year, working really well. We went down, while I was gone on vacation, he kept things up. He did lose. Pumps went down on him. We always battle algae in the river plugging up the screens. He probably battled it harder. They probably needed to. Usually it just shut down for about two or three weeks and then start it back up. It kind of dies out, but the lake had a lot of algae on it this year. It was a real mess, and everybody was noticing that. Have you looked at it lately?
No, like I told you, I haven't been, I live above it, but I haven't driven down.
Storms you guys had while I was gone over there fishing, that three-quarters of an inch rain down at one day. But I assume between the rain and the wind. It's pretty much all gone.
Oh, that's.
Where it went, it's just gone. I mean, the lake looks really good.
That's crazy.
It's a, both Sean and I have been scratching our heads a little as to, you know, what can we do about that on the lake? And, you know, it's kind of a natural phenomenon, of course. And so, I mean, eventually that lake will be dead and gone. It'll turn into a swamp eventually, cuz vegetated matter and stuff. I mean, maybe the city will pay to dredge it out, but I mean, hundreds of years.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I've been racking my brain about, you know, how are we gonna tackle that? I went online looking at stuff. I mean, going in mechanically, breaking it out and getting rid of it is one of the solutions. Of course, chemical companies want to sell you chemicals to do it, but that's a big lake, be a big expense, and I'm not too keen to throw chemicals in the water or pulling fish out and eating them. Uh, but anyway, just a crazy, I mean, it was interesting. I didn't realize it. Sean was telling me, Ben, you should see the lake. He says, and he fishes it all the time. He says, I could see the ball. It just went down. That stuff all over to gone.
One year, it was kind of a bluish, greenish, weird color all over about five years ago. That must have been like the same stuff.
Well, yeah, kind of a blue-green algae, which is another thing you gotta watch out for, you know?
Yeah.
Does ODFW, uh, test it for, for people eating fish out?
I, and I don't think they're the agency in charge of that. It'd be some type of a health department. Uh, Sean did tell me, he was over at Hag Lake, and there was somebody that lives up Keysey Road, and he did catch who they worked for. But they were doing water sampling over there, and he mentioned our lake. And it sounded like they were gonna give me a phone call, cuz, you know, and we were talking about the algae what we could do, but I haven't heard anything from them, but I mean, had they been with an agency, I'd assume DQ or somebody. Yeah, I, I'm not sure who's, might be DQ, like go out and sample. I think you'd have to, it's probably complaint-driven, so.
Yeah.
I'm not, this stuff that we had this year is more of a long-film analogy, and that's not the stuff, but the stuff that looks like somebody's built green paint on the water is that blue-green algae that's gonna be dangerous, so. So other than that, pumps have been running great, so.
Good.
Only I, in my head, I just want to acknowledge and thank the Lions Club, Sean and Mayor Hobart, whoever else was down there. They cleaned up the Dewey Pool and and got the lifeguard station, I think, hauled down.
Yeah.
Pulled it down, and I just wonder if the city couldn't send the Lions a, like a thank you note or something. It'd be nice, just a suggestion. I don't know what you guys think about it.
Sure.
They do, I think they do it every year, don't they, Forrest?
Yes.
Yeah, that, those are there, basically because it's floodway. They take those out in storm because they were things they supplied that they want, that are part of the names and all that is the Alliance project.
Anyway, it looked great, the picture I saw, pressure washed down. Anyway, I thought I'd acknowledge him. That's all I had. Um, you're done? We want action item summary.
Okay, so I have that staff's gonna move forward with accepting the deannexation application from Mr. Dixon. Uh, we're gonna set that July seventeenth from nine to noon is the counselor applicant interviews. And thank you note to the Lions.
What was the last one?
Thank you note to the Lions.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else I missed? Okay.
Uh, check with ODOT about the graffiti.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I'll try to slip down tomorrow and take a look.
Okay.
It might be something we can take care of easier, but you might want to see how, how much it is, huh?
Yeah, I mean, just for, we have an idea.
You just shoot me a picture, then I can.
Yeah.
I've been meaning to look, but I haven't. I think that addresses one of the concerns. Somebody called in or wrote a letter about what, right?
Yeah. And then there was, I don't know if you saw it on Facebook, there was graffiti at Hawkins Park that Tim's taking care of. Someone wrote with like a Sharpie, some stuff about.
On the playground equipment.
Yes.
Yeah.
He's gonna take care of that.
You know, it's starting to get more of a problem. Now I noticed that the breach out there, they just built on the concrete wall.
Yeah, someone hit it again.
No.
Over the.
Oh, yeah, somebody caught them doing that too.
Yeah, but they painted over that, and this is a new one.
Yeah. I mean, it's so ugly. It's not art. I can't read it. There's something about graffiti. I can't tell what the heck they're talking about.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell had an idea for everyone to gather up all their dog poo and align it all over in front of that wall because either the people are not going to be able to get close enough to graffiti or if they choose to graffiti it, they'll go home with a little surprise. Where's that?
Put a collection can for all the dog poo bags.
Just dump it like the elves, like the, they do for the Elkites.
Yeah, yeah.
Down on Beaver Creek. Is it Beaver Creek? No. Is it Beaver Creek?
It is. It's Beaver Creek.
Yes, someone tagged it again.
Yeah. Upper part of Beaver Creek.
But I thought that's, that's interesting. That might work. You couldn't get close enough to it because you weren't gonna step in the dew, but it's sad.
I think we're ready to adjourn.
Okay.
Our meeting at nine 50 PM.
Is it really nine 50?
No.
Eight 50?
Nine 50. What time?
I'm sorry.